Ladies and gentlemen, testing one two, testing one two. Good evening, everyone. If you could all please be seated. Thank you all. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Homeless Tribune, the Asbury Park class, the Board Office, the schools, and on cable division channel 118 and Verizon FiOS channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 16th, 2017. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Marra, please.
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Marra. Roll call, please.
Andriani.
Present.
Callie.
Present.
Dunn.
Here.
Dineoff.
Present.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Reed.
Present.
Singh.
Here.
Weber. DePrima.
Here.
Quarm exists.
Could we all rise for the prejudice allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could remain standing for a moment, please. We have a moment of silence. Quiet, please. Move the Board acknowledge the passing of Sheila Gold, certified short-term substitute, and express our deepest sympathy to her family and friends. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. This is one of our favorite meetings of the year where we get to honor the people that make our district the great district it is. At our agenda meeting, I forgot to ask for a volunteer of the Code of Ethics, so since Mrs. Andriani reminded me at the meeting, I'm going to ask her if she would please read it.
I'm sorry, there was an echo, but I would be very happy to read it. The highlight of this month is vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Okay, district board goals will be updated shortly, and we have an addendum. Mr. Marra, do you need to say anything about that, or no? Okay, I need a motion to accept the addendum, please.
So.
Dineoff will second.
I don't know who's first. Mrs. Andriani and Jeff. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Marra.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
The addendum is accepted.
Okay, approval of the minutes. I need a motion, please.
Callie, I move.
Mrs. Callie.
Andriani will second.
Mrs. Andriani, any discussion? Mr. Marra.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Abstain.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, report of our student representatives to the Board. Courtney, please.
So, in the high school, there's a fashion show happening tomorrow in the auditorium, and it starts at 5 o'clock, and the tickets are $3 at the door. On Thursday, there is a senior ziplining trip. On Friday, there is the Olbridge Spring Chorus Concert at 7 o'clock. There will be a blood drive also on Friday during the school day. On May 22nd is Senior Scholarship Night, and then on the 23rd is the cabaret at 6:30. On the 24th, there is an instrumental concert. On the 25th, Sensation is having a show at 7 o'clock. On the 26th is Senior Takeover Day, and then after Memorial Day, the senior class goes to Disney for the week until June 3rd. And then prom will be on June 9th, and finals are also starting the same day, starting with 12th period, and it goes backwards. And I also just wanted to congratulate all of the teachers of the year from elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school. So, congrats, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Brendan. Okay, on to why everybody's here. Recognition. Move the Board, commend the following teachers for being selected Olbridge Teacher of Recognition recipient for the 2016-2017 school year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sididino at the podium.
Thank you, Board of Education, and thank you, public, our educators who are here tonight. This is the best of the award shows that you'll see on TV in the areas, acknowledging people for their craft and their profession, much like the Screen Actors Guild Award. The reason this is best because it is selected by the peers of the educators, not through popularity or ticket sales, but well, people who are professionals in the craft see their coworkers doing every day, and acknowledging that for their efforts. So that's what makes it so special. And while we're very proud of this tradition, no matter how many changes come through the state, we will always hold on to this tradition because it's always a great idea to celebrate the efforts of our staff. So, I'm going to turn over to you now, the presenters from the staff, and let me see who they are. It is...Lala Land. Just kidding, no. You'll catch that later on if you didn't get it now. No, seriously, we have two things security does here. They allow Steve Harvey, or...who's the other one who messed up? Me, right now. We don't allow Steve Harvey here to call that out. So, we'll have Ryan Sobin and Dr. Kim Giles, our co-chairs of Instructional Council, who works through this process to explain it to you and hand out the awards. Thank you, everyone.
If I may, real quick, some of my colleagues requested seats in the audience. They're there for you, whoever wants. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Olbridge Teacher and Educational Service Profession Recognition Program. I am Kimberly Giles, Principal of Miller Elementary School, and this is Ryan Sobin, Special Education Teacher at Madison Park Elementary School. And together, we stand before you as the co-chairs of the Olbridge Instructional Council. The Instructional Council is an advisory committee comprised of teachers, administrators, and central administrative members. The purpose of the council is to collaboratively review and address instructional issues and district policies and make recommendations for improvement.
The Instructional Council has been the steam engine that drives this wonderful teacher and educational service professional recognition program. However, this program would not be what it is today without the generous contributions from the OBEA, the OBAA, OBSA, and the PTA Presidents' Council. I would like to thank the educators we honor here tonight for inspiring the children of Olbridge. On behalf of the Instructional Council, congratulations to all of you. And without further ado, I'd like to call to the podium the Principal of Carpenter Elementary School, Mr. Christopher McHugh.
I'm joined at the podium tonight with PTA Representative Cheryl Barnhart and M. Scott Carpenter's Teacher of the Year, Justine Brybag. For the past three years, Justine has worked at both Carpenter and Miller Elementary School as an art teacher, and in those three years, she's touched the lives of so many students here in Olbridge. She was nominated by both Carpenter Elementary School and Miller School for Teacher of the Year. She's a former Carpenter Elementary School teacher. In fact, Mrs. Shaw is in the back, one of her teachers she had years ago, and in her spare time, she enjoys yoga and meditation. School-wide activities, if there's any activities that are going on, Ms. Brybag is right there getting involved. She runs our art auction every year with Mrs. Tilton. That's very successful, and so many of our students and families attend. The other day, she helped assist the PTA in putting on a wonderful talent show. She has a yoga club on Tuesday and Friday mornings for our 4th and 5th grade students and any staff members that would like to join her. She's starting something new, and this Thursday night, we're having a painting night for Carpenter parents and any Olbridge community members if they would like to attend, and she is going to instruct them on how to make a painting, and it's a fundraiser for our school. She's always willing to help any way she can, whether it's designing the background for a school play or a show, or for graduation. She was very instrumental in both Carpenter and Miller School when they both went for national and state school character. She was part of the Character Ed Committee, as well as she helped decorate the building for site visits, and we truly appreciate that with her. Now, there's a quote, "Every child is an artist. The problem is how to remain an artist once we grow up," by Pablo Picasso. As a teacher here, Mrs. Brybag always wants to teach more than art. She wants to teach about the history, the cultural background of each artist, the time period, and the artist's style. Anytime you walk in her classroom, she always has technology present and using it in her lessons, and as the students are working, you will hear some yoga music quietly playing in the background. One of the most impressive things that I've seen as an educator, and a very good instructional strategy, is she will videotape herself doing a drawing for her students. And the reason for that is, is that any student that misses the week before, they come up to the front, she plays the video, and it will instruct them step by step how to create the painting or the picture they want that week. Also allows any of the students who want to go back up front that might be halfway through the drawing to go up and to see the strategies to continue, and I just thought that was truly impressive, what you do. And when asked, she says, "It allows me more time to work individually with each of my students here." Two important things that she has established in her short time at Carpenter is, one is the yearbook is dedicated solely to the 5th grade, the cover. She designs the cover, and each 5th grade student colors in a portion of the yearbook so that they'll always be a part of that year. Also, every year, she makes a drawing that hangs right outside of her art room, in which every one of the children decorate. And this year, it was a fish that coincided with our school theme, exploring the depths of knowledge, in which we had an ocean-wide theme this year in there. Now, some teachers, if they want their class to get quiet, might clap their hands, they might use a signal, they might say, "One, two, three, eyes on me," different things. Now, Ms. Brybag, she quietly goes up to the front of the room, she dings on what we call her zen bell. It's really a Tibetan singing bell, but the students immediately get quiet with that. She always is decorating our building, whether it's the hallways, whether it's the windows. As you turn down the corner, depending on the season, you will see displayed in the front of our building would be their hearts for Valentine's Day, flowers for the springtime, snowflakes for the wintertime. It's truly impressive as you turn the corner to come down to our building here. She is always one of the last staff members to leave the building, especially these late Fridays, very late on Friday, preparing for the next week. And one of the things that she establishes at the end of her classes is that she has the Artist of the Week. And even this morning, I had a little kindergarten girl walking through the hallways, holding up her Artist of the Week sign. "Mr. McHugh, I got Artist of the Week." So excited about that. So, thank you for doing that. If you ask any of our staff members, they will tell you that their students always look forward to art class, that her class is welcoming and inspiring. She is a dedicated teacher that has a wonderful personality, and she encourages her students to take risks and try new ideas during art class. To win this award is truly an honor. To win this award in your third year of teaching is remarkable, and it says a lot about you. Not only to be the winner for Carpenter, but you were the finalist at Miller. That's truly amazing here, and that just says what a wonderful job that you are doing here for our children of Olbridge in here. You're a wonderful artist, very talented, but I came across a quote, and I think you would agree. "To be a teacher is my greatest work of art." I speak on behalf of the students, staff, and parents of Carpenter Elementary School, and I'm sure Miller School, because I talk a lot with Dr. Giles. We are lucky to have you as a teacher in our buildings. We thank you for your hard work and dedication, and congratulations on this award. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Ferry, Principal of Cheesecake Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm joined at the podium this evening by Ms. Kazner, Cheesecake's PTA President, and Mr. Scott Tipmus, Cheesecake's Teacher of the Year for 2016-2017. It's a distinct honor this evening to be able to present Cheesecake Elementary School's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Tipmus. Joining Mr. Tipmus in the audience this evening are his fiancee Dana, Madison Park's Teacher of the Year, his parents, his parents, and numerous members of the Cheesecake faculty, all here to show their respect and support for a colleague they've come to greatly admire. The principal-teacher relationship between Mr. Tipmus and I, since we began working at Cheesecake three years ago, has been a pleasure. But an interesting fact is that we knew each other long before 2014. Back around the turn of this new century in 2001, I was a math teacher at Jonas Salt Middle School, and Scott Tipmus was a hard-working student in my 8th grade algebra class. The fact that our Teacher of the Year tonight was an 8th grade student I taught makes me feel two things: old and extremely proud. It seems everyone around Mr. Tipmus is proud of the teacher he has become. The entire Cheesecake family erupted in cheers the moment they heard he was named Teacher of the Year because he has truly earned this honor. He embodies the type of high-caliber teaching that has allowed Cheesecake to succeed to the level it has as a school, and he represents the finest of what this great profession of education can and should be. Mr. Tipmus can accurately be described as a diligent worker, collegial, resourceful, an excellent communicator, astute, level-headed, passionate, humble, tech-savvy, driven, and a lifelong learner. Of all that makes Mr. Tipmus so successful, two stand out to me. One is his passion for learning new, innovative, and stimulating ways to teach his students, and two is commitment to connecting with his students and showing them, through his words and actions, that he cares. If you ask any principal what he or she looks for in a teacher when interviewing and hiring, all would agree that they want a teacher with a fire in the belly. Well, Mr. Tipmus's fire in his belly is more like an inferno, a blazing passion to identify the best tools, techniques, and resources that exist, to continually evolve into the absolute best teacher he can become for the sake of every child in his classroom. Mr. T. Networks, and when I say Mr. T., I'm not referring to the character from the A-Team from years ago, if you remember that. Of course, referring to Mr. Tipmus. Mr. T. Networks with educators not only in Cheesecake but throughout the state and nation. He's become a titan on Twitter with educator followers throughout the country, and he now has 1,721 followers. He's not using Twitter to merely get social media likes, but instead, Mr. Tipmus has shown us all how to leverage Twitter to become an indispensable learning community where teachers, principals, superintendents, authors, vendors, and other innovators can share great ideas, new technology, and lessons. He attends ed camps, book talks, conferences such as TCT, Tomorrow's Classroom Today, and attended numerous ed chats and online conferences such as Ditch That Textbook Summit. He's been greatly inspired by two books, Kids Deserve It and Teach Like a Pirate. His desire to learn new ideas from others in his profession and to share it with his own colleagues is insatiable. I've watched his learning translate into stimulating student learning as he employed virtual field trips, interactive online communication with experts in fields studied by the students, fidget spinner STEM lessons, Brain Pop, interactive green screens, Flipgrid, Microsoft Classroom, mystery Skype collaborations with other US schools, and much more. As if his dedication to outstanding instruction in the classroom was not already impressive enough, Mr. Tipmus shows how much he cares about and values his students by seeking out opportunities to support them not only outside the classroom but outside the confines of the school. During this school year, Mr. Tipmus has tried to attend at least one event important to each of his students, for as many students as he possibly could. Students and parents surely beamed when they saw Mr. Tipmus show up to cheer on his students at basketball and baseball games, ice skating events, karate matches, and gymnastics meets. Mr. Tipmus is a Microsoft innovative educator and trainer, a Flipgrid ambassador, soon to be a Brain Pop certified educator. He is a teaching pirate and a pioneer in the next generation of teaching. He is humble, passionate, and talented, and his already noteworthy teaching career is just beginning. Mr. Tipmus, thank you for bringing your A-game each and every day. The author of Kids Deserve It, Dave Burgess, said the following, "Light yourself on fire with enthusiasm, and people will come from miles around to watch you burn." Perhaps to the chagrin of his talented fiancee, but to the delight of his principal, Mr. Tipmus burns the midnight oil, scouring Twitter and internet for an exciting new idea he can implement with his class the next day to enhance his lessons. His inferno of enthusiasm captivates his students, and they are thriving as a result of his dedication to them. Mr. Tipmus, tonight and every day, we are enjoying watching your passion for teaching burn. It is illuminating a wonderful path for your students and is inspiring us all. This time, I'd like to call to the podium my colleague, Ms. Gramada, the Principal of Cooper Elementary School.
No, 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 no. Over here. Come closer, come closer. Don't make me stand. Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of highlighting the amazing work of Ms. Brittany Fuentes. I am joined up at the podium by Mrs. Christina Rickleitis. She is our PTA President. And in the audience, we have Mom, Ms. Joanne Fuentes. We have sister and brother-in-law Danielle and Matt, boyfriend Todd, and of course, the Cooper crew. To know Brittany is to truly be in awe of such a young, tremendous talent. She joined our Cooper family only two short years ago, and by the following list of accomplishments, one would think she's been doing this for 20 years. Ms. Fuentes quickly got to work assisting in the creation of our nationally recognized Readers of the Pack program, which she has successfully sustained and continues to garnish positive press and praise. She coaches successfully both the high school JV field hockey team in the fall, and she's one of the heads, excuse me, and the freshman lacrosse in the spring. She's one of the heads of our Sunshine Club, which for anyone who's done that knows that that in and of itself is a full-time job. Let's see, she's been one of our Park Wizards for the past two years, another very important job. She represented our school in Washington, DC just this past October at a Character.org conference. She's a member of our Code Blue and our school safety team. She's an EpiPen delegate, a facilitator and presenter at our EdCamp PLC pilot. Oh, and by the way, did I mention she's our ESL teacher, too? With all those accomplishments read, I must take a moment to speak of Brittany as a teacher and a colleague. She never tires. She never says no. She never shortchanges any responsibility for another, and she always has a smile on her face or a funny story to share. Her connection to her students and their families is something we all admire about her. Her students look at her with such trust and love that anyone who has ever witnessed it stands in amazement. She knows exactly what each student needs, their individual story, and how to make them feel special. And I have proof. When I asked one of her students, "What is the greatest thing about Ms. Fuentes?" She responded, "She knows everything. She's so smart, smarter than my phone." I couldn't agree more. So, I close with saying, Brett, you deserve this, and I'm so happy to stand up here and let everybody know how amazing you are. And I know, on behalf of Ms. Fuentes, we'd like to wish all of tonight's recipients a big round of applause and congratulations. And I have to say, Olbridge, this is the third year in a row that I'm able to stand up here and honor an Olbridge graduate. I have to say, we must be doing something right. Vive la Olbridge. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Toohey.
Good evening. Along with every other administrator and staff member here tonight, I want to congratulate all the teachers of the year. Tonight, I am joined by Ms. Tracy Rogers, our Glenn School Preschool Program Teacher of the Year. and Mrs. Voss, our Septa President. Mrs. Rogiers is the epitome of a preschool teacher. She is dedicated, caring, and simply loves her students. When I asked her colleagues at Glenn School to describe Mrs. Rogiers, they said she is patient, understanding, and funny. They also said she is always upbeat, wonderful to be around, and one of the biggest pet lovers they know. In fact, she is such a big pet lover that she might have tried CPR on a baby chicken, but more on that later. Her colleagues highlighted that Mrs. Rogiers always had the best hair for crazy hair day, was one of the only teachers who wore a chicken suit for Dr. Seuss Week. All of these positive qualities, including the chicken suit, are reasons why I am fortunate enough to see on a daily basis Ms. Rogiers interacting with her students, her parents, and their fellow staff members. In all seriousness, in order to gain some inspiration for this introduction, I waited till everyone left school today, and I went to see what Mrs. Rogiers' classroom looks like when the students aren't present. Needless to say, Mrs. Rogiers' classroom says a lot about her. First, I noticed the cheerful chirping of her class pets, four newly hatched chickens who had been brought into the world by Mrs. Rogiers and her students in Room Six. Also, Mrs. Rogiers had a small greenhouse with the beginnings of her plants that she'll be planting with her students in the Glenn Preschool Garden. The next item I noticed was the perfectly created cupcakes, cutouts, which have the names and birthdays of every student in her class. In fact, throughout the classroom, everything was geared to ensure students were actively learning within their environment, which I have no doubt was done on purpose by Ms. Rogiers. Finally, and most telling, were the positive words of encouragement seen throughout the classroom. Phrases like "kindness is one gift that anyone can give" are prominently displayed throughout the room, providing her students, parents, and coworkers with positive thoughts as they move through their day. Both from the appearance of the classroom and the persona of the teacher is obvious why Mrs. Rogiers is receiving this recognition tonight. Someone once told me that it takes a big heart to help shape little minds. Well, Mrs. Rogiers, if that is the case, you have a heart the size of New Jersey. Too often, we take the skills and expertise of our teachers for granted. Well, tonight, I am happy to say to Ms. Rogiers that it continues to be an honor working with you, and your students and colleagues at Glenn School are lucky to have you. Thank you and congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Now, I would like to turn the mic over to Dr. Rico to introduce the Grissom Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. It's my honor and privilege to stand before you tonight to introduce the 2016-2017 Virgilai Grissom Elementary School Teacher of the Year. I always enjoy this tradition of honoring a teacher as it gives me the opportunity to publicly address how proud I am of the staff at Grissom Elementary School. If you recall, it is my custom to make a youthful correlation between the Teacher of the Year and a fictitious character. Most recently, I've used Mary Poppins and the Little Engine That Could as analogies. To keep that tradition, I would like to compare this year's Teacher of the Year to a Wendy's Kids Meal. Yes, I said it, a Wendy's Kids Meal. The story begins a few years ago when I was a member of the Elementary Hiring Committee. After many long hours of interviewing people, I made a pit stop at Wendy's on my trek back to Grissom. As I stood in line, I noticed a gentleman and his adorable little daughter in front of me. I made eye contact with her, and the little girl smiled. But she got scared and then dug her head in her daddy's side. The gentleman quickly looked at me, and I showed him my ID, and I explained to him that I was an elementary principal, just not some creep. We had a conversation about Obridge Schools and how his little one would soon be starting kindergarten. He also informed me that his wife was a kindergarten teacher in a district, in a district far away. Since we were transitioning to full-day kindergarten, and there were positions available, I told him to have his wife apply. When her resume came across my desk, I was impressed by her qualifications and set up the interview. The day she came in for the interview, honestly, I felt uneasy. I mean, after all, she knew me as the creepy guy at Wendy's that smiled at her daughter. Once we began talking, though, it took me very short time to realize how absolutely wonderful she was and how Grissom had to have her. I knew that I had to have her part of my school and part of my everyday. To this day, both she and I laugh about how Wendy's made our paths cross. So how is our Teacher of the Year and a Wendy's Kid Meal alike? Let's take a look. Chicken nuggets, the foundation of every meal. Being a kindergarten teacher, she's the foundation of where the love for learning begins at Grissom Elementary School. The french fries, the exciting part of the meal for the children as it's the first part of the meal that the kids dive into. Our Teacher of the Year makes every moment with her exciting. Each morning, the kindergarteners rush into the building to greet their teacher and begin their exciting classroom journey for the day. The apple slices, the sweet yet nutritional part of the kid's meal. Not only is our Teacher of the Year sweet, she's extremely nurturing as well. The juice box, the refreshing component of the kid's meal. It's so refreshing to see this teacher, your mom won't let you get soda, so yes, the juice box. It is so refreshing to see the teacher in action and with the Grissom community. She's always open to listening to students or parents' concerns. The students and parents and staff respect her and respond very favorably to her genuine interest that she displays towards them. Lastly, the toy, the motivating factor to eating all of your food. Our Teacher of the Year is extremely motivating and one of the most influential people in our school. She has a unique ability to identify the essence of each student and to stimulate that spirit and create an unquenching thirst for learning. In the same way that a Wendy's Kids Meal provides a balanced meal, our Teacher of the Year provides a balanced learning experience for our students. I would now like to introduce the 2016-2017 Virgilai Grissom Elementary School Teacher of the Year, and no, it's not Dave Thomas, but rather Allison Gallin. And now, I'd like to call up my colleague, Mr. John Daly. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Hodge, the only zoo I can relate to is maybe the Panera Bread one, but we'll keep that between colleagues and our Madison Park family. I just had to say it after Dr. Rico shared that story with us for the Wendy's. Good evening. Joining me at the podium tonight is Madison Park PTA President, Mrs. Stacy Pitts, and our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Dana Hajmahalas. Dana Hajmahalas, a proud alumni of Obridge Public Schools, began her career as a resource room teacher in 2011. In 2013, Dana transitioned to a self-contained special education classroom at Madison Park and continues in this role. Although uncertain about the change, as many of us are, she has reflected that it was triumphant in her professional career. Dana is dedicated in both educational and emotional development of her students. After a challenging day in the classroom, which I know there are many, she continues to see the positive in each of her students. This characteristic is not something that is learned, but rather innate. When observing Dana in practice, she continuously builds student confidence, promotes their acceptance, and provides necessary scaffolding allowing them to achieve their goals. She is truly an advocate for her students. Dana's willingness to learn is inspiring. She continues to seek professional development and quickly turn keys with colleagues during her free time and at faculty meetings. She openly shares her ideas and methodologies and truly exemplifies a growth mindset. Dana has made herself a staple at Madison Park. She works collaboratively, she volunteers for various committees, she even sends me emails with short video clips of her students learning, along with the pares, and they're having fun, or even a song that we could use in our orientation while we're talking about the growth mindset at Madison Park. Those small things really mean a lot to the staff and to the students and to myself and to Madison Park. She is a positive influence to all. Dana's colleagues shared that they believe it is her personal mission to bring smiles to their faces, and that is one of the many reasons that Madison Park feels like a home away from home. I can attest to that, as the other day, in the morning before school, Dana was dancing out in the hallway, and I called over the loudspeaker, I could see her, and I said, "Ms. Hajmahalas, can you report to the office?" And she walked in, and she continued to dance, put a smile on my face, put a smile on those faces of other staff members in the building, and that's amazing. Dana, this is a well-deserved honor, and we are proud of you.
Good evening, I'm Lori Cluddy, and I'm the Principal of McDivitt School. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce McDivitt's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Michelle George. And McDivitt's PTA President-elect, Mrs. Bridgette Halada. Mrs. George is here tonight with her lovely family, her husband Chris, her daughters Samantha and Sarah, and her best friend Kim. We welcome them here tonight as we celebrate this well-deserved honor. Mrs. George went to college to be a dietitian, but found her way into teaching. She is the daughter of a retired Obridge teacher, Mrs. Jeanette Patzner, who couldn't be here tonight. I know she's so proud of all of your accomplishments and is sending you her best wishes and tons of hugs. There, I lost my place. Mrs. George spent many hours helping her mother do all the teacher things as she was growing up. It's not surprising that Mrs. George discovered teaching was her forte. Mrs. George teaches first grade at McDivitt School. She is beloved by her colleagues, students, and parents. Mrs. George spends quality time with each of her students as they learn. Her classroom is filled with exciting adventures, treasures, activities, success, praise, and a great deal of learning. She encourages the students to be independent and responsible. Mrs. George is an outstanding teacher whose dedication to her students, the school, and the district is exemplary. Mrs. George does so much for our school. She models good character and is on the Character Leadership Committee. She is an advisor for K-Kids and a union representative. Mrs. George supports school and PTA events and can often be found in her room after school setting up for the next day. Mrs. George's positive attitude stretches out to all around her. Mrs. George finds a way to make things happen. She inspires her colleagues to be open-minded and accept new ideas. Mrs. George is collaborative, respects diversity, plans delightful experiences for her students, and supports student achievement through learning. Mrs. George maintains regular contact with her students' parents. She uses new technology like Remind 101 or Class Dojo, and old technology like paper and pencils, or even the telephone to keep her parents informed. Mrs. George attends many Obridge functions because she enjoys seeing and supporting her former students. Mrs. George can be found at many events: Football, Pinkout, Powderpuff, World Fest, Relay for Life, the Arts Festival, the Obridge Day, just to name a few. Mrs. George believes that being a teacher means one is invested in the life of the students, no matter how old they are or when they were in one's class. Let me share a little of what Mrs. George's colleagues and students have written about her. You demonstrate continued dedication. You are creative and patient with your students. You are sincere and caring. You are an inspiring role model for the students. You know how to build each student's self-esteem. You make learning fun and enjoyable. You are genuine and considerate. You truly love each and every one of the students and make each one feel like they matter to you. Your ability to share your outstanding professional teaching talent is exhibited in your commitment to your students' academic progress. You are the type of teacher who never gives up on a student and loves to teach every day. Mrs. George holds a special place for each of her students in her heart. This incredible woman is at McDivitt. How lucky are we? Thank you, Mrs. George, for your service to our school district, your devotion to our McDivitt students, your never-ending compassion, your enthusiasm to impart knowledge, and for your commitment to educational excellence. Please give a round of applause to McDivitt's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Michelle George. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Ray Payton from Memorial Elementary School.
Good evening, and congratulations to all of Obridge Township's Public School 2017 Governor Teacher of the Year. They bring a great honor to themselves, their school, and their entire school community. I would like to welcome our PTA President, Mrs. Clarissa Marbaugh, our Governor Teacher Award winner, Mrs. Audrey Serango, and to my immediate left, our Student Council President, Kavaya Venkatesan. Mrs. Serango is an overcomer, a problem solver, an innovator, and a dynamic member of the RTI team. Her enthusiasm, love, and passion for teaching have highly a rival on our staff, and we have an incredible faculty. Mrs. Serango does not work or serve for awards or accolades, but simply to inspire and impact all those she comes in contact with each day. She has mastered the elusive art of being firm but fair, having rules yet maintaining relationships, and keenly remembering that though she teaches ELA and math content, she is really teaching children whom she freely offers love, acceptance, and grace. While remaining current with the latest instructional strategies and technologies, she can still reach a troubled or struggling student with simple yet profound motherly instincts and empathy coupled with complete professionalism. Likewise, she has accelerated and challenged her brightest of students because of her professional development experiences and innovations she has pursued and mastered. Mrs. Serango has a calling in life, and the calling is teaching, which she exquisitely balances with her most important roles as a wife and mother of three lovely girls. She teaches her students to strive for excellence, to love reading, and to respect each other, and to teach all of us, her peers, to give our best for our students and to wear a smile and have faith and remember that the storms of life could often produce beautiful rainbows and new growth. Her flexibility in working with students, teachers, and the public has earned her an invaluable reputation as an excellent teacher who truly cares about her students. She is passionate about education, and she works tirelessly to create open-ended learning experiences for all her students. On behalf of Memorial's staff, I thank Mrs. Serango for the many ways in which she has inspired the lives of her students. Ladies and gentlemen, the Calorists for making the greatest difference in the lives of children at Memorial are Mrs. Serango's diligence and unparalleled commitment to excellence every day. It is a great pleasure that I congratulate you for representing our school tonight as our Teacher of the Year. To that end, I would like to introduce Memorial School's Student Council President, Kavaya Venkatesan, to expand on her teachers and speak firsthand about her classroom experiences.
A teacher plants the seed of knowledge, sprinkles them with love, and patiently matures their growth to produce tomorrow's dreams. A perfect example for that is Memorial's wonderful teacher, Mrs. Serango. Our Principal, Mr. Payton, had eloquently stated and simply put that Mrs. Serango provides encouragement, inspiration, and aspiration for her students. Mrs. Serango gives us confidence and brings the best out of us. She is so passionate to teach and ignites the fire of learning in our minds. Her engaging ways not only make learning an interesting experience, but more engaging. She always quests our brains, allowing us to think out of the box and strive for excellence. Her persistence in helping students with the specific skill they need exceeds. Most importantly, she encourages us to reach the sky fearlessly and passionately. She's a teacher who persists the knowledge and skills to engage every student in her lessons, who knows that I help all students. who knows that it helps all students achieve high goals and who displays high competency in curriculum and standards. This outstanding learning experience helps us become lifelong learners. All of these aforementioned qualities on Mrs. Serango makes her a unique remarkable teacher among the best teachers at Memorial. Lastly, we thank Mrs. Serango from the bottom of our hearts for her patience, resourcefulness, open-mindedness, and effort she has put in educating us. On behalf of Mr. Payton, our principal, the staff at Memorial, and myself, we congratulate you on your award this evening. Have a nice evening.
Is this working? This is not working. I like... This is not working. I like to thank Kavaya for those kind words, and I'll finish with this. We're only 10 hours away from Memorial School. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Kennedy Giles, from Miller Elementary School.
Boy, that's a tough act to follow. Well, good evening again, and congratulations to all of the recipients. Joining me this evening is Mrs. Ferante, Miller School's PTA President. And tonight, it is my extreme honor to recognize Miller School's 2016-2017 Teacher of the Year recipient, Lori Olson. Lori is the proud mother of two wonderful boys who are joining us this evening, Christopher and Daniel. She is an avid runner and enjoys cooking. Miss Olson grew up in Old Bridge. She attended Grissom, Sauk, and Madison Central High Schools. She began her teaching career in Old Bridge 20 years ago. Through the years, she has taught pre-kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade at various schools within our district. She is currently teaching second grade at Miller School. Miss Olson is an innovative and creative teacher. She is very tech-savvy, and she is artistic. In addition to her daily teaching duties, she has taken on the role as the resident door decorator for my office, the main office, and the custodian's office. Her creations are amazing. You should stop by and see sometime. This evening, I would like to present Lori with her survival kit for Miller School's Teacher of the Year. Your kit contains the following. There's rubber bands in there to remind you to be flexible. An eraser, because everyone makes mistakes, and that's okay, just remember to learn from them. Smarties to help make each student smarter. Tissues to wipe away the tears, yours and theirs. Marbles to replace the ones that you've lost. A shiny penny to remind you each student will shine in their own special way. Lifesaver candy, because you are a lifesaver to many of your students. And finally, a mint. This is to remind you, Lori, that you are worth a mint to your students and the staff at Miller School. So tonight, Lori, we honor you for all you do and a job well done. We're glad you're receiving this well-deserved honor. On behalf of the staff, students, and parents of Miller School, congratulations and much continued success. And at this time, I'd like to call up Sharaw's interim principal, Bonnie Brady.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce you to Mrs. Tricia Barrett, the Sharaw Teacher of the Year. Joining me at the podium is Gina Abraham. She is the second Vice President of the Sharaw PTA. And Kristy Robinson, who is our Sharaw Speech Teacher. Also joining us in the audience is the family of Mrs. Barrett. Bill, her husband, Erin, her daughter, Liam, her son, and Mom is Pat. Pat is her mom. Also, the faculty and staff of Sharaw School is here tonight. I am Bonnie Brady. I am the interim principal at Sharaw School. I opened the school in September when the principal and the secretary took a leave of absence. In the chaos of learning new protocols, real-time, we use Power School where I came from, procedures, the student system, and who's who in the Old Bridge School District, it was Mrs. Barrett who stepped up and gave so much of her time, her energy, and her effort to keep things running smoothly at the beginning of the year. When Mrs. Montori called me to come back at the end of the year, she... The first thing that she said to me is, "You're coming in on the first day of park testing." But don't worry, Barrett has it all under control. And Mrs. Montori was right. So for the 12 weeks that I have known Mrs. Barrett, I can say that she is a team player. She's a multitasker. She is one who puts students first in everything that she does. But these words are coming from a stranger. So I'd like to share the time that we have with Mrs. Kristy Robinson, who can speak for Mrs. Montori, who can speak for the faculty and the staff of Sharaw School, who know Mrs. Barrett for all of the qualities which have made her Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Robinson?
Good evening. Being the Sharaw Teacher of the Year comes with many perks, one of which is a parking space. This is also one of the many perks of being the school principal. So I'm hoping if I nail this speech tonight that my soon-to-be principal will share her second parking space with me, again, for yet another year. All kidding aside, it is my pleasure to stand before you, representing the Sharaw Teacher of the Year. As you well know, trying to fill Colleen Montori's shoes in the area of speech writing is absolutely impossible, so I will speak from my heart regarding my colleague and soon-to-be boss, Mrs. Tricia Barrett, or as we lovingly refer to her as, Barrett. Mrs. Barrett exemplifies what a teacher should be, going above and beyond every day as our technology teacher. She is dedicated to the education of each student and recognizes the importance of knowing each and every one of her students personally, all 327 of them, to be exact. How can a teacher possibly know every single student personally, you ask? Well, I assure you, Mrs. Barrett does. Each day when her class arrives, Barrett can be seen outside of her classroom, fist bumping or high-fiving every single student as they enter the classroom. At first, I found this very comical, and I offered you an industrial-sized bottle of hand sanitizer, as well as good luck for the upcoming cold and flu season. But as the year progressed, I could see the importance of this simple act. By taking the time to greet each student personally, Mrs. Barrett establishes an invaluable relationship with each student, every 327 of them, to be exact. She knows in that moment of saying hello whether the student is having a good day or a bad day. By simply taking a few minutes to say hello, Mrs. Barrett is positively impacting the students well beyond the classroom as well as their likelihood of learning success. Mrs. Barrett is an educator in the classroom as well as beyond the classroom, running programs such as Art Soup and Hour of Code. Her passion for education is evident in all that she does, and she ignites that same passion in her students and colleagues alike. It is an honor to present to you Sharaw Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Tricia Barrett. And now, I would like... I would like to introduce Mr. Marin Zoli of L&amp;B Shepherd School.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to welcome to the podium Shepherd's PTA President, Mrs. Vega, and our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Janie Powell. Now, for those of you who know this phenomenal person, you know that she loves music and concerts. And how fitting that we begin with a quote from New Jersey and Saro's very own musician, John Bon Jovi, who said this at the commencement address of Fairleigh Dickinson University only hours ago. "Whatever your vision of how your life is going to go forward, do it in pencil." He said, "The great thing is the journey, and that is about to begin. You may take some turns along the way that may take you to somewhere you never even dreamed of going. It's a great journey." Now, Mrs. Powell, how true that is. You see, Mrs. Powell did not begin her journey as a teacher. She went to Rutgers, and upon graduating, became a very successful career as a regional manager for the greeting card company, American Greetings. Now, I made sure to note that as I accidentally walked into the Hallmark store and I quickly changed course. And marriage and three wonderful children, Matt, Catherine, and Ryan, along with her granddaughter Cece, followed. As the quote I read earlier alluded, "The journey of life is filled with unexpected twists and turns," which began Mrs. Powell down a path that would lead her here tonight. Mrs. Powell began her teaching career at Grissom four years ago and joined the Shepherd community in 2014-2015. I am so glad that she came to us. Her classroom is constantly filled with amazing lessons and grateful children. And if you don't believe me, I hold in my hand testimony of Mrs. Powell's students, which I was able to obtain with some help from Mrs. Gonzalez, her third-grade partner. Adjectives and qualities such as funny, having humor, being respectful, kind, amazing, and smart, caring and happy, positive. These are the exact descriptions that any of us would wish that our own child teacher possesses. As one student put it, "She is powerful." Mrs. Powell, you are indeed powerful. From getting your class to understand the importance of community service and empathy to animals through donations to the local animal shelter to your work with the Shepherd Sharks Running Club, from helping with the Old Bridge online article collections to coming to my office after the school day is done for a piece of chocolate and to share the next great idea. Always willing to help, not only with colleagues and students or her own family, Mrs. Powell truly is a model to emulate. Always moving forward and displaying a sense of calm, rarely showing any signs of being rattled, no matter what might be going on in life. Now, here's a funny story about Mrs. Powell and not appearing rattled, which I didn't learn of until recently. On the day that the administrators were notified and given the green light to tell the recipients of the Teacher of the Year achievement, I was not in the building. Not wanting to let Mrs. Powell go home for St. Patrick's Day weekend, unaware of her new title, I called and I asked for her to be paged to the office. Now, being on the administrative side for a while has made me forget that usually a call to the principal's office tends to be slightly unnerving for even the most confident of staff. But she answered very calmly with a, "Hi, am I in trouble?" What I didn't know until later was that this answer was her subconscious, feeling guilty about allowing her students to taste some Irish soda bread earlier that day. Now, relief quickly followed, and then joy after the real reason for the call came to light. It is that exact steadfastness, along with all the other qualities that mentioned before, that is a great benefit to our students, to her family, and to her friends. We are proud and lucky to have you as a member of the Shepherd community. Mrs. Powell, congratulations on your accomplishment, and wishing you many, many more happy and successful years. It is truly a pleasure to work with you. Now, I'd like to introduce my friend, principal of Southwood School, Mrs. Karen Foley.
Good evening. I'm joined at the podium this evening with Mrs. Gina Peterson, kindergarten teacher at Southwood School, and our recipient of Teacher of the Year. Also welcoming, Mrs. Patty Grassi of the Southwood PTA. It is truly my pleasure to introduce Southwood School's Teacher of the Year, Gina Peterson. This evening, Gina is joined by her mom and dad, as well as the three loves of her life, her husband Jamie, and her children, Olivia and Alexander. Mrs. Peterson has been an early childhood educator for 17 years. Fortunately for the students, staff, and parents of Southwood, she's been our kindergarten teacher for the past three years. Mrs. Peterson's students have described her as very pretty, very, very kind, and to quote, "She's the sweetest person in the whole entire world." Each morning, she greets her students at the classroom door, and they get to choose whether they will shake her hand, give a high five, or a hug. Not surprisingly, nearly every student greets Mrs. Peterson with a hug each morning. Gina truly treats the children in her class with the same love and compassion as if they were her own. Mrs. Peterson embodies all that a kindergarten teacher should be. She is kind and compassionate. Her classroom is filled with positive energy that is contagious: singing, dancing, and most of all, smiles. In fact, Mrs. Peterson's class is one of my favorite classes to visit at Southwood School. I never leave her room without a smile on my face. When you walk into Room 113, you are likely to be greeted with a rousing rendition of "You Rock" or "Lil' Dose Trace" or "La La 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 La." Gina is highly respected by her colleagues because of her undeniable and contagious positivity. She's a consummate team player who serves as the teacher liaison to our PTA. She's also actively involved in our family gardening club, along with countless school committees. Mrs. Peterson even volunteered to go into the ominous dunk tank at our annual green fair. But what I think sets Gina apart from others... But what I think sets Gina apart from others is her genuine demeanor. There are no pretenses. Whether she's participating in a benefit basketball game in pigtails and knee socks, or dressed in saddle shoes and a poodle skirt for the fiftieth day of school, Mrs. Peterson gives 100% to all that she does. Just something off-script, because I did have pages and pages of notes about Mrs. Peterson. I know Mrs. Peterson was at Sharaw prior to coming to Southwood, and I'm sure that her colleagues there would agree as well, that genuine is certainly the word to describe Gina. Thank you. Thank you, Sharaw. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, one of the things that often makes me chuckle is that sometimes when it's late in the day, and I think everybody's gone, my door is closed, my light is off, but I'm still working, I will often get, after the four o'clock, four-thirty-ish time, a knock on the door, and it's Gina. And Gina will sometimes pop in for a chocolate, she'll pull up a chair, she'll sit down and she'll chat. And most people really don't want to spend time with the principal in the office at any time of the day. But when you sit and you talk to Gina, she's always interested in asking, "How am I doing? Karen, how are you doing?" She speaks to me in a manner that most people, you don't get this from teacher to administrator, and that's what makes me feel good. She'll say things to me like, "Man, it was a rough day, wasn't it, man?" Or, "Right back at you, right back at you, babe," or "Right back at you, girl." And for people that know Mrs. Peterson, you know, I say it with a chuckle, but it's so genuine because this is who Mrs. Peterson is. And she is so beloved by students, by parents. In fact, just one other quick anecdote, you know, I was faced with a challenging situation at the beginning of the school year, because one of my colleagues, an elementary principal, had a child starting kindergarten at Southwood School. And I thought to myself, "The child is being placed in Mrs. Peterson's class. I sure hope that my colleague loves Mrs. Peterson as much as I do." And fortunately, but not surprisingly, whenever my colleague has the chance, she tells me how much her child adores Mrs. Peterson, and how much her child loves coming to school because of Mrs. Peterson. And not surprisingly, that sentiment, Mrs. Peterson, has been shared by so many other parents in your class this year. So, I could go on and on. I thought I'd have time to talk about how you're the pride and joy of Canali Farms. Gina did say to me, she's a genuine person. Karen, I grew up in a cornfield in South Jersey. She taught me about succotash. What would a person from Staten Island know about succotash? I didn't know it was a combination of lima beans and corn. And lots of other valuable lessons along the way. But most importantly, I'd very like to take this opportunity to, on behalf of the students and staff of Southwood, express to Mrs. Peterson with heartfelt appreciation that we love you, we appreciate all that you do, this is such a well-deserved honor, and I am proud to call you my colleague and my friend. Congratulations. And now, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Courtney Lowery from Voorhees School.
Along with our PTA representatives, Mrs. Deena Bannerman and Mrs. Cheryl Hennessy, it is my honor to introduce you to Mrs. Noreen DiSarno, our Voorhees School Teacher of Mrs. DiSarno is an excellent example of the wonderful aspects of the Old Bridge community. She grew up in Old Bridge and attended McDivitt, Sandberg, and was in the first graduating class of Old Bridge High School. After high school graduation, Mrs. DiSarno went to Ramapo University. Soon, Mrs. DiSarno was following in her mother's footsteps and became a kindergarten teacher here in Old Bridge. Mrs. DiSarno began her career as a traveling teacher, one year having to race across town from Voorhees in the morning to Madison Park in the afternoon. Luckily, after two years, Mrs. DiSarno found a permanent home at Voorhees. As the only kindergarten teacher for a while, Mrs. DiSarno would always get to know all of the students of Voorhees and would check in on their well-being long after they left her classroom. As full-day kindergarten was implemented, Mrs. DiSarno gained some grade-level colleagues, and she gladly served as the kindergarten guru. Mrs. DiSarno is the kind of person who is always willing to go the extra mile to help out her students or colleagues. As the mother of three young boys, I'll say that again, three young boys, Mrs. DiSarno always keeps her perspective as apparent, treating children in her class as if they are her own. She communicates with parents regularly, understanding what it's like to be on the other end of the phone. Mrs. DiSarno is always ready to try something new. This past year, she has worked collaboratively to create an in-class resource classroom that makes every student feel welcome and achieve success. She routinely goes out of her way to make sure that students are able to fulfill their highest potential, both academically and socially. When I asked some of Mrs. DiSarno's students about her, along with the typical, "She's nice, she's funny, she's pretty," they also said, "She really likes us." This statement shows that Mrs. DiSarno's students understand how much they truly mean to her. Mrs. DiSarno is always willing to share and help others with utilizing technology. Most recently, Mrs. DiSarno attended a workshop on Class Dojo. After the training, she enthusiastically began utilizing the class management and communication tool and to share all of the exciting things going on in her room. She now readily helps any of her colleagues to set up their own Class Dojo accounts. Personally, I enjoy Mrs. DiSarno's enthusiasm and her willingness to share, especially when it results in chocolate-covered Oreos in the faculty room. Mrs. DiSarno has come full circle in Old Bridge, from being in the classroom as a child to being celebrated as a professional. I am grateful that she works at Voorhees School and proud to say that she is one of Old Bridge's finest. Thank you, Noreen, for all that you do. Congratulations. I would now like to introduce Mr. Rezis, Principal of Salk School.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all our recipients tonight. Joining me at the podium is my PTA President, Ms. Lucy Kurtz, and Jonas Salk Middle School's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Karen Dunn. Mrs. Dunn began her career teaching special education in downtown Newark, where I'm certain she learned a lot as a first-year teacher. She was off to Clifton Next, where she continued working with the special education population elementary for five years. She was fortunate enough to take on her biggest role, that of raising her three sons, who worked their way through all the Old Bridge school systems after attending and then graduating from Penn State University. So, I believe that's Robbie, Joey, and Billy. I'm trying to get them right. After fourteen years, the Old Bridge School District was lucky enough to recognize her talents, and she was hired in 2002 as a special education teacher in Jonas Salk Middle School, where she has remained for the past fifteen years. The experiences Ms. Dunn has acquired during her personal and professional life have truly had an impact on how she views and responds to our school community. She understands the hardships that many children face, the love that they require, and the nurturing that is needed to grow to their potential. When you speak with Karen, these absolutes work so naturally in her responses that they are just part of who she is. You feel at peace and justified in your thoughts, and walk away feeling positive about the day. It may be the reason that so many of her friends will tell you that if you leave her for a second, when you return, she has made a new friend with whoever is fortunate enough to be within your shot of her. Knowing the effect she has on adults, you can only imagine the ways in which she empowers her students. She is an asset to our school, to our district, and the Old Bridge community as a whole. I want to congratulate her and thank her for all she does. Congratulations, Mrs. Dunn. I'd like to welcome Dr. Simon Up, Principal of Carl Sandberg Middle School.
Good evening. I'm joined tonight with Roxanne Lacanti, who's our PTA President, and on behalf of the entire Sandberg community, students, and families, I would like to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Michelle Conticchio. Mrs. Conticchio is joined tonight by her husband Frank and her daughters Jennifer and Paige. And we're also happy to have you recognized for your outstanding contributions to our school and your dedication to the profession. Mrs. Conticchio has served students at Sandberg for twenty-two of her twenty-six-year career as a teacher. As a seventh-grade ELA teacher, she demonstrates the collaboration, ingenuity, and resourcefulness that you would expect from a master teacher. She's always looking for the hook that will draw her students in and engage them in the conversation. Michelle refers to the aha moments in her classroom as her greatest ongoing experience as an educator. Those moments when the light bulb goes off, and she has helped a student to make a connection, to overcome a learning obstacle, or to just find joy in the learning. Her lessons include connections to character education themes, history, social issues, and personal reflection, all resulting in the enhancement of the student's social and emotional growth. Michelle's influence and dedication is not confined to the classroom. She's the co-advisor of our Student Council and the Builders Club, both of these organizations assisting our students in focusing on service learning. She and her partners plan numerous events throughout the year for our students to truly serve the community. For example, the Student Council has hosted two events at the Reform Church Home. They hosted the Fall Ball in October with a Halloween theme, and most recently, a senior prom. Through the Builders Club, the students learn the needs of the local community and how they can commit their time and energy to the support of others in need. Their big event, by the way, Thursday night, Sandberg School, seven o'clock, talent show, tickets are five dollars. Come all, after you go to Carpenter for their art. These types of experiences for our students require hours of planning and coordination with community service providers. Michelle assures that her students make the connection, that their volunteer efforts have a positive impact on the lives of other people. I reached out to another amazing Old Bridge teacher, Jennifer Conticchio, to share something about her mom, and she said, "No, it's not bad. Ever since I was a little girl, I always wanted to be a teacher. And from the time I could talk, or maybe even before that, my mom would play school with me and my sister. This is a memory that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. My mom has always instilled a love of learning for both me and my sister. And it was my mom's passion for teaching and love for her students that inspired me to become a teacher." Michelle, I know that you have inspired many students to reach their goals. I am so proud to work with you, and on behalf of the Sandberg community, I want to thank you for all that you do every day. We brought along a cheering substance here. And now, I'd like to introduce the Principal of the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center, Mr. Tim Dolan.
I am joined up at the podium tonight with the 2017 Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center Teacher of the Year, Renee Gildari-Friel. It is no surprise to myself or anyone else associated with the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center that Renee Gildari-Friel was named the 2017 Teacher of the Year. For most of her brief but flourishing five-year career as a SAC counselor at the Grade Nine Center, Renee has forged a reputation of being nothing short of the beacon of hope for students in need at the EMGNC. Renee is the champion of the downtrodden student, the voice of the meek and the protector of the weak. She is the advocate of the students who all too often are overlooked, the safety net for the fall-through-the-crack kids that walk the halls of the EMGNC. She provides for them a soundboard and in turn, a platform for their voices and a safe space in the purple room, or as I sometimes call it, the layer of listening. Her professionalism and reputation as a SAC, Activities Coordinator and Mentor exceeds far beyond the boundaries of the EMGNC and extends to the Old Bridge High School main building, the district, and quite possibly throughout the county and amongst her peers and contemporaries in the school counseling slash SAC world. But what makes Renee truly special is her internal bond that she has forged with so many Old Bridge students over the years. Countless numbers of students whose faces you recognize but names you forget descend upon the school every Christmas season and at the end of the year to thank Renee and pay homage to the person who listened to them in their time of need. She was the one who offered some significant nugget of wisdom or word of encouragement to help them pass over the troubled waters they were navigating through their life at the tenuous time in the ninth grade, the one that seemed as if they would never survive, but somehow, with Renee's words, came through with her at their side. Throughout the EMGNC, Renee's value is immeasurable to the school. When she swoops and consoles a crying girl in the purple room, or the greatest compliment that I can bestow upon her is that she is one of the most caring individuals that I have ever come across in almost my almost twenty years in education as a teacher and administrator. And I can often be quoted as saying, "I don't know how I'd run the place without her." I've seen her comfort students in time of need, celebrate their victories and console them in defeat, inspire them to reach new heights, and counsel them to escape their demons. And most impressively, I've looked on in amazement as she's quieted an auditorium full of fourteen- and fifteen-year-olds with the utterance of a single word. And I know I'm not the only one who recognizes her talents, because my friend and longtime partner and colleague, Mr. Sasso, never misses an opportunity to pitch a trade, as he calls it, to ascend to the big house. Of course, it's blocked every year. Renee has the unique ability to bring a tinge of levity to almost any serious moment, a valuable trait in her line of work. One of the things that most people don't realize about the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center, which in turns add to its uniqueness as a school in the district, is that every September, it marks the first time that that current age group is coming together as a class. And it marks the embarkment of their final academic journey towards their high school diploma. Being a historian by schooling and hobby, I've always liked to compare the EMGNC to a sort of scholastic Ellis Island. When you take a minute and look at it in relative terms, the Grade Nine Center has an educational equivalence to the historical landmark, obviously on a much larger scale to the 20th Century Island Immigration Center, that has acted as a doorstep to the American dream and its internal guardian, the Statue of Liberty, that is, to this day stands as a solitary guard welcoming everyone into New York Harbor with her torch. The plaque at the base of the Statue of Liberty reads, "Given your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these homeless tempests tossed to me, I lift my lamp beside the golden door." The lady who wrote that was Mrs. Emma Lazarus, and she was born in New York Upper Society, dedicated the vast majority of her short life and her literary career to advocating and helping Russian Jewish immigrants and the anti-Semitism, excuse me, that they endured. Her work was so respected that her words would later become the signature phrase that people recite when thinking of that historical landmark. I often looked at the EMGNC as the first step in their students' academic journey through the Old Bridge High School and equate the two. I tell the young knights all the time, "The second you step foot in the door, your college clock starts ticking." And Renee stands like the Lady Liberty guarding them and welcoming them in to the school. She embodies the spirit of helping others and is the one who guides them through those early bumpy roads that are sure to encounter, that they are sure to encounter as they embark on that journey towards the PNC Art Center. The passion that Renee brings every day at the EMGNC is infectious to the students and the staff. Her energy is unbounded, whether she's choreographing a dance routine for the battle of the classes or encouraging students... students to reach their academic goals, she has the ability to bring out the best in everyone. But it's more than that. It's Renee's drive to help people, in my opinion, that is her strongest trait. She's organized Thanksgiving food drives, brought entire holiday meals to the neediest families of Old Bridge on the Wednesday before the big day. The astonishment on the families' faces is truly amazing, inspiring, and humbling at the same time. In the hallways of the EMGNC, Renee often reaches out to kids who have a hard time finding a group to call their own, or people that they can call friends, and organizes after-school events for them to get together in the hopes that they can connect with a familiar face or someone who has a similar like. She's done so much for so many at the EMGNC that her impact, I believe, will truly be felt for years to come. Which brings me to a time a few years ago when one day I happened to walk into the cafeteria a few minutes before the bell, and inside I found Renee huddled in the corner with a young nervous-looking lady. Obviously nervous, she entered, another lady obviously, entered from across the doors by the gymnasium, slowly walked across the room towards Renee and the girl she was standing with. From afar, I could see Renee's hands waving and tenuous pleasantries being exchanged. A moment later, she cautiously walked the two girls over to a table and sat down with them. A second later, the bell rang, and Renee disappeared into the throngs of students walking into the cafeteria. Without any notice or fanfare, Renee touched the lives of two girls in a simple way, but made an impact of a lifetime. The conclusion to that story came last week during the final, almost final leg of the endless testing at the EMGNC. I recently bumped into those two girls, now best friends, and taking AP tests together. That is the impact that Renee has on people, and the story just made me think of what a special place Old Bridge is. And Renee is proudly carrying the torch. Since then, Renee has never failed to live to that dream, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many of her peers. She has become the embodiment of what it means to be a national school of character. Renee loves what she does, therefore she never really works a day in her life. So at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the EMGNC 2017 Teacher of the Year, Renee
We're almost there. Good evening. On behalf of the high school administration, we would like to extend our congratulations to all of the Teacher of the Year recipients here tonight. It is truly a distinguished honor. A special congratulations to Mrs. Gildari-Friel, who may work at the Grade Nine Center, but her impact is felt deep within our hallways here at the main building, and I cannot thank her enough. I'm sure we will be joined here in a minute by Ms. Kim Castain, our PTSA President. And we are here tonight with the 2017 Honoree of Old Bridge High School's Teacher of the Year Award, Ms. Sue Walsh. Ms. Walsh is more than just an excellent teacher. She has actively involved herself in the culture of Old Bridge High School and has made an unforgettable mark on her students and peers. Still to this day, I think she holds a record for the most kids that come back to say thank you, including having her name mentioned more than any of us in this room during the graduation ceremony each June, as well as having taught more Teacher of the Year recipients, including several being honored here this evening. She is truly an asset to our school community. With Ms. Walsh, the teaching doesn't end with the sound of a bell. It happens before school, after school, and in the hallway. Ms. Walsh is the kind of person that truly loves what she does, and her passion for teaching and learning is contagious. There are so many things that I love about Sue, but perhaps the number one for me is that she genuinely wants to make sure her students are prepared for life after high school. Many of us know her as an English classroom teacher and her amazing ability to inspire through words. But along with her colleagues, Mr. Reed, Mr. Gudjuski, and Mr. Danny Lonza Farmer, her work with our TV students is just as impressive. Each year provides another opportunity for her to work a contact of an old friend or a former graduate that have excelled in their profession and provide opportunities for our students, opportunities that are truly life-changing and only possible because of how much she cares. I was fortunate enough to grow up as a Yankee fan in the 90s and watched them win many championships. The one constant with all those championships was a core group of players who grew up in the system and were considered homegrown talent, names like Jeter, Pettit, Passata, and Mariano. As educators, our championships aren't hung on a banner in some grand stadium, but rather in the hearts of the children that we encounter each day in our classrooms. Mrs. Walsh is what I would consider Old Bridge homegrown talent, and she embodies the spirit of excellence that we hope to nurture in each new teacher. She is a core member of our team, and she is making a difference each day. On behalf of the faculty, staff, and students of Old Bridge High School, we are proud to recognize a true Old Bridgian, Sue Walsh, as our 2017 Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, again. Let's give a round of applause for Lori Coletti, Principal of McDivitt School. I did forget to announce her before. I got you, Lori. Mr. Campezi. All right. So, good evening, everybody. This is Old Bridge Township's Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mr. Peter Campezi. Give him a round of applause. I would have just stuck to the script, I would have got it right. So Pete, I wrote you a letter. Pete works at Madison Park School in our behavior program with special education students. Luckily for Old Bridge, and selfishly for Madison Park, one morning, a few years ago, you realized that you were ready for a career change and you decided to join the field of education. While working full-time as a special education paraprofessional, you have managed to start a family, continue your education full-time at Kane University, and become a certified CPI trainer. In three short years, you have grown unquestionably as a professional. You continue to carry out programs, maintain positive relationships with students and staff, and have a growth mindset. Second person in my staff that has one. Peter, you truly embody all the characteristics when we speak of the role of an educational support professional. You are conscientious, you are caring, and willing to take on any challenge. You consistently demonstrate a high degree of professionalism while performing your duties. And I can't even tell you, the rapport that you have with the students is amazing. I commend you for your resolve in remaining on task and maximizing the opportunity for your students to learn and excel. You have made a lasting impact on the students of Madison Park, and for that, we thank you.